Will it be available after? Assuming the recording works, it would be available.
Hey Dallas.
Good morning. Hello. I was gonna say good morning.
You got a haircut. It looks nice.
No, I didn't.
It's just video screen, you know.
No, you got kids that have to call you dad.
They call me grandpa too.
They're a nice addition to my neighborhood.
I see you're a board still.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, I am.
Looks like we stop about.
For some reason, I could not get through, um, through the router. I couldn't connect on the internet with Zoom, so. I'm on my phone.
It works best for me that way, too. I think I have like, uh, three minutes. Do I have the same time as everybody else there?
I see 5:58.
Okay.
Is my, uh, audio coming out okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hear you loud and clear.
Okay.
Your video is really good, too, Steve.
Thanks.
I saw that.
This is, this is, this is Cindy. I'm raising my hand to ask, um, um, will a recorded copy of this meeting be made available after the meeting to me?
Right. What I answered was, assuming the video works, we'll be happy to make it available.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
You're welcome Cindy.
Thank you for having Zoom as well.
Welcome Cindy. So I think I saw, um, every board member come on except Tara.
She's there.
I'm here.
Okay, sounds, sounds good. All right, great. Well, season's greetings, everyone.
Same to you.
I think we, I think we can get started. Okay, so with all due respect, we'll have to skip over the pledge allegiance tonight, but, um, we will move along to roll call. Let's open up the meeting and we have Donna Inman here, Steve Leclerc.
Here.
Jeff Stevens. Jeff Stevens?
You're gonna be with Jeff.
Oops, oh.
I'm here, hello.
Hi, okay, great. Terry Jenke?
Here.
Dallas Bond?
Here.
Dave Mackey?
Here.
Jennifer Stowe?
Here.
And we have Christine in Norland. I don't believe Tyler's present.
I think he is.
Oh, awesome.
Are you there Tyler? He was planning to join us.
Okay.
Well, I guess I don't hear him, but he was planning to be here. Okay.
Okay, so is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I, I would like to add something to the new business under the agenda.
Okay.
I think we should address, um, giving some of the money to the employees from the COVID relief fund.
Okay. So then we'll add that to it and. So do we, do we need a, a second on that or?
Dallas, you want to add your second to that as you just seconded the original agenda?
I will second that.
Okay, sounds good. And we need to take a roll call of votes tonight. Um, so is there any discussion first? Okay, so Donna Inman, yes. Steve Leclerc?
Yes.
Jeff Stevens?
Yes.
Terry Jenke?
Yes.
Dallas Bond?
Yes.
Dave Mackey?
Yes.
Jennifer Stowe?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, and any opposed or abstained? Nope, but motion carries. So then. I guess we're gonna move on to presentations. And we had Deb Bradford present on the two 2020 audit. Take it away Deb.
On the agenda, great. Okay, your audit for, uh, the June 20th, 2020 year end, uh, was performed. And with that, I'd like to break it down. There are three letters in your audit report. The first letter is our independent audit report that states that we are independent, but that also your audit was, um, an unmodified opinion, which is considered a clean opinion. I really want to come up with something more dramatic than clean because it's just as, and unmodified sounds like it's going the wrong way, but basically that's it. Usually with all these, uh, school districts being done at the same time, it's the front page of the paper, clean audit, and then they have to come up with something else fancier for the next school because they can't use the same header if they've been in a row. The very first part I'd like to bring your attention to is page seven, which is considered the man, which is called the management discussion and analysis. This report is basically your state of the union to your taxpayers um, of your, of your school district. And it basically gives a nice little snapshot of the entire district, mostly concentrating on general fund and the variances and where things were, um, that varied from the previous year. So if as a board member you're questioned or asked about how did the school do, it's really great. This is posted on the school website. Is, this is a really great section of the report as board members to refer to, to them on how things went in school district. Gives a really good outlook on even from the student counts to how money was spent. It also gives a little bit more history on the capital projects that are gonna basically gonna be ending in February, March, something like that. The next part of the audit is on page 12 and 13, and this is a complete, um, look at the audit report as a full district, and it takes in all your liabilities. About four years ago, we started putting in all the pension and OPEB issues, which really threw probably every single school district into a deficit at this point because it takes everything in. And this year, uh, your deficit went up a little bit by 183,000. And that, that is probably, you know, completely, um, across the board at every school district in Michigan. On page 14 of the audit, it gives you the balance sheet and it, it has the major funds and your two major funds are general fund and then also your capital projects fund. And it gives what the balances are. And on page 16, it shows the difference in those. So last year's fund balance for the general fund increased by $76,990. And then your capital projects fund had just started up, so it's had a ending fund balance of the 3 million because at June 30th, you didn't get to spend it all yet because people weren't working full and your project had just started. On the non-major ones, I'll get back to that as we go through the footnotes and hit that one as the last. This year on your non-major funds, your student activities are now recorded as a special revenue, which was a change in the feds and also the state chart of accounts. So that's one area that I'll touch base on as we go through your notes. I'd like to have you turn to your notes on with regards to your, uh, fixed assets and also onto your debt. On page 25 of the audit, the capital assets are there and it's showing the construction in progress at 1.5 million. And the only assets that were additions were the land and the purchasing of, um, the land across where the parking lot is now. So that, that part increased. And then on the next page, I'm, I'm on 26 and 27, gives you a detail of all the debt that you have as a township in the capital lease agreements. And then on page 28, it shows you the change in it. So you had an increase of debt of 4.9, which was for the, uh, refunding bond, and then the Michigan finance had 240,000 increase, but you also decreased it by 300, so a net, um, decrease of 60,000. And then you also made a payment on your, um, refunding was 125. And the Q-SAB is completely paid off. So your ending debt increased by the 4.9 for your new projects, but decreased by 576. And you can see that there as each year. And then it also shows what the next year's debt payments will be, and that's the 451. On page eight, I, I like to share this one and it's gonna become an old joke, but this is really good sleeping material. This is all about the Michigan School Employment Retirement Systems, the MEPsers, and also the OPEB plans. So if you're having trouble sleeping, this is really something good to start your night with. And I have that on good authority, the, uh, training that we go through in June for all the school districts and, um, auditors. We, um, get together in June for eight hours and he spends a good amount of time on this and, and he also talks about sleeping through it, too. On page 45, I'm sorry, wrong page. On page 40 is your budget to actual, and this is what the state looks at. And this year Tyler gets a pat on the shoulder. He, um, did everything right. Uh, there's no comment or recommendation with regards to your budget in the back. Thought I better look to make sure. The, um, you budgeted enough revenue and, um, budgeted enough that you didn't overspend because in the state of Michigan, it's illegal to spend over your budget. And that goes for all governmentals. And the next, the next page I'd like to bring your attention to is on page 47. And this is your non-major governmental funds. This includes your 2014 debt, your 2019 debt, the food service and the student activity funds. This is the fund that was changed from being a fiduciary fund into being a special revenue fund. So all the student activities now, um, should show up, right Tyler, as, uh, one of the, one of the funds for all the board members to review.
Right.
Tyler says yes. And so those are showing up now as balance sheet and also an income statement, or in this case, we call it the statement of revenue and expenditures. And page 51 is one of the letters, and that's our internal control over reporting and compliance matters. In the state of Michigan, for the Department of Ed and also for the federal part of it, for the government auditing standards, your audit is considered in a yellow book, which is government auditing standards because the book was actually yellow. This, this shows that we, we went through your internal controls, we updated them, we reviewed them, we discussed them, and, um, also with compliance and that, we look at grants to see if you spent your money correctly and also with the state of Michigan to make sure that the money was spent, um, and reported correctly. And then our final letter is our communication letter. And each of you had received an email from me, unless you're a new board member. And the, um, communication stated that if you had any questions while we were doing the audit, to please contact me. And if you didn't have any questions, that was fine, too. But this is also the end of it. We're saying that we did your audit and we didn't find any problems. We didn't have any troubles doing the audit. There was no disagreements or arguments with regards to those in charge that were helping us performing the audit and management's representation. And, um, it was a pleasure doing the audit. And, uh, at this time, are there any questions?
I have none. Anybody else?
I have none.
Anytime during the year, if you have any questions or don't understand part of the audit, when you finally do read it all from the back, um, please feel free to call me at any time. When you reach my answering machine here, I believe I also give you my cell phone number on it. And also it was in your email that you could contact me by my cell at any time because we don't all work the same hours. And I don't mind taking your call after hours.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Thank you. Merry Christmas Deb.
Merry Christmas to all of you. And, um, don't forget to approve the audit. Thank you.
Thanks Deb.
Bye bye. Thank you. Okay. Well, we're gonna move on now to the extended COVID-19 learning plan. Check in with Superintendent Norland. I'll set Christina.
Yes.
Okay.
This is the part of the meeting where we reconfirm how instruction is going to be delivered amid the COVID-19 pandemic and also share what our two, um, two-way interaction rates are for the previous month. So elementary, that's grades K through five, will continue to have in-person learning primarily. And online learning remains available for K to five students whose families are not comfortable sending them to the classroom. And if the school, um, is told by authorities that we must close for in-person instruction for K to five, then we will do so and we will again begin our remote learning plan. We are not planning on a hybrid schedule at this time. For middle and high school, that's grade six to 12. We also have the vast majority of our students in person when that is allowed. And of course, for the past month, we, um, have been remote at the high school level and we just went right into our remote learning plan again, and that has continued to work very well. We're very pleased that we are now allowed to come back to in-person instruction. And so we will see everybody in January and I'll speak more to that later. Those students who are not able to be in person at the high school and middle school level also can choose the online platform for their learning. And those students in ninth through 12th grade, um, who would uh, not feel comfortable being in person or their families can't send them, also have the distance learning option, which is live Google Meet class sessions while the rest of the students are also in those same sessions. And again, the high school is, um, and middle school are not planning a hybrid schedule at this time. We do not have any English language learners, and so we don't need a separate plan for them. And our special education students are all in person, and so we don't need a special plan for those students being remote at this time. At this time, is there any public comment from parents or guardians regarding, regarding the extended COVID-19 learning plan? If you would like to speak on that, go ahead and raise your hand. I see one hand up. And hopefully you'll be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm just wondering if you did receive confirmation that students will be going back after break?
As of now, that's the plan. Um, in fact, schools are in session, um, who didn't have Christmas break scheduled for this week. Right now, um, it was.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Great.
We were released from that, and so we are expecting that we will be back on January 4th. Um, I was gonna say it later, but I can say it now that the governor has said that she now deems it, um, a last resort to send students to full remote instruction. So if it can be helped, um, they really don't want to do that because they have been told by, by all of us throughout the state how detrimental that is for the students' learning. Although we are doing a good job of it in Dollar Bay, we're really happy to be in person again.
Yes, absolutely. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Just feel free to raise your hand. You have to find the three dots. Okay, seeing none, I will then proceed to share our interaction rates, um, to indicate student engagement for the month of November. The first week of the month of November, we had 99% engagement. And again, that is, uh, considered, um, you're, you're considered to be engaged as a student if there have been two, two-way interactions, which can be homework submitted, it can be an email, it can be a phone call, um, any, any two-way interactions, two per week is what the state has deemed to be considered the minimal engagement level we're looking for. So week one, 99%, week two, 98%, week three, 95%, week four, which was just the two-week, two-day week of Thanksgiving, was 91%. And that's where we are now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Christina. And we're gonna move on now to public comment. Now, we're gonna open the meeting to public comment. And if anyone in the virtual audience would like to make a comment to the board, please click on the three dots and use the raise hand function. And we will, we will then, you know, request to unmute you when, when it is your turn. Remember that the board does not respond to questions or statements during public comment. So do we have anyone? Okay.
Let's give another minute Donna, in case people, you know.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, I think you're, I'm able to unmute now.
Yep. I just wanted to thank the teachers again. Um, it's been a rough month, but they've been great at, with both of my girls. So, um, administration and the teachers have been wonderful to work with. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you. That's very nice to hear. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So now we are going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there a recommendation to approve the items for consent agenda? Anybody have any corrections in a minute? We have the regular board meeting for November, the financial statements for the previous month, and checks written in the previous month. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have support? I will support that. So do we have a discussion? Okay. All right, then we're gonna, Donna? Yes. Steve Leclerc?
Yes.
Jeff Stevens?
Yes.
Terry Jenke?
Yes.
Dallas Bond?
Yes.
David Mackey?
Yes.
Jennifer Stowe? Jennifer? Are you there still Jen?
We must have lost Jen. Sorry.
Okay, gotcha. All right, good. Okay, so all in favor, I, opposed, none, any abstained, motion carries. Okay. So we're gonna move on to reports. We have the superintendent principal report. Christina?
Yes, first I will start with, oops, it was in my camera. I will start with the bond construction, um, project update. I told Mr. Seppen he did not have to come to this meeting because there really are not, um, any new updates, but I will let, just refresh you on where we are right now. Things are going very well with the construction project. It's very nice to have a couple of weeks now where the workers can, um, can be as loud as they need and, and kind of make a mess in the public spaces. New boilers have been delivered to the school. Will be installed in January and February. New exterior permanent hand railings have been installed. So if you look outside the school to the stairways, you'll see those. Painting and ceiling grids are complete and lockers are installed in our new locker rooms. And epoxy floor work has started and will be completed over the holiday break. The new district offices are near completion. Some of us were in there today trying to figure out where the desks would go. And ceilings, lights, doors and carpeting have been installed. Only the interior glass and the final cleaning remain to be done. Final drywall mudding and painting in the lobby entrance will be completed during the school break, and they already were working on that today as well. We do still anticipate final inspections by code officials and the fire marshal by mid-January occupancy to follow these approvals for phase two. Work will start for phase three in the old counselor's office slash new bathroom suite area over the school holiday break. And they, again, were making a lot of noise and working in there today already. And we are still targeting a March completion date for the majority of the construction contract. We're very grateful for the work and dedication. This is my, um, my PS to Tim's report, very grateful for the work and dedication of Tim Seppen, our project manager. He has kept every aspect of the project organized and on schedule, has stepped in to help personally with many, many needs that have emerged. Meaning like he's picked up a hammer and done a lot of work on his own. So it's been extremely invaluable. So that's the bond construction project update, and now I'll move on to other categories. We're glad to be in a better financial position as demonstrated by the recently completed audit of the 1920 school year, as you heard. Things were looking very bleak for us and most school districts last summer when we were all expecting a huge reduction in funding. So things turned out much, much better than that. And, uh, it's now onward and upward to a stable financial footing. So we're on our way. It has been very quiet in school this pre-Christmas season, very unusual. However, we have, have had some fun activity. Mrs. Johnson did a lovely job with the Christmas program for the elementary students. Uh, they weren't able to sing, but they did lots of motions, even a glow stick number, um, lots of props and just a really engaging program that premiered on Friday. So all the elementary school classrooms got to watch it at the same time, and it was a real hoot. So we're very thankful for her great work on that. And, um, we had a spark, a virtual spark assembly. That's our positive behavior support model for the elementary school. And that was on Friday and, um, had a good time and the kids were able to be recognized for the great spark behavior. Mrs. Heenan spearheaded a holiday spirit week this past week. So there were lots of dress-up days wearing holiday colors and candy canes and hot chocolate and fun things like that. Uh, okay, moving on. A number of students did come back to in-person learning at the close of the first trimester and the start of the second. So we're very glad to have them back. We do have some students who are opting for the online option, both the elementary and the high school. Then we do have some high school students still doing the distance learning option. That's the live Google meets. Um, so we're happy to be able to provide all these options and we're really happy that we get to see some of our students back again. We're currently on our two-week break, as you all know, and we expect all students, as I mentioned before, to return on January 4th. And just reiterate, the Governor Whitmer did state, um, in her last press conference, or a recent one anyway, that she views the future suspension of in-person instruction, um, in any form to be a last resort. So all the administrators in the Copper Country ISD, um, really hope that we'll be able to continue in-person instruction, and we do plan to come back on the 4th. In athletics, something on a lot of people's minds, indoor winter sports continue to be suspended until January 16th because the current order from the MDHHS expires on the 15th of January. So middle school and high school sports can resume on the 16th. MHSAA is allowing finals for some of the fall sports, girls volleyball, swimming and diving, and football to take place. But that, uh, they are subject to a new testing program. So those students will have to be involved in some testing and agree to all of those procedures. That really doesn't apply to our school much. At the current time, the updated MDHHS emergency orders do not allow for any spectators at contests for any sports. Winter sports are expected to be complete by the end of March. That includes finals and all spring sports will start on time. As of now, that's the plan, and no changes will be made to the spring tournament times and dates either. So, um, at least we have hope on the horizon that sports can begin, at least for the sake of the kids in the middle of January. Okay, many teacher changes happening in our building right now. We must say goodbye and thank you to Andrea Rossio, who has served us for four and a half years as an outstanding special education teacher. Anybody who has worked with her, um, has seen her professionalism, her care, her expertise. We're very sorry to see her go, but we do wish her well. She's moving on to a position at the Copper Country ISD as school psych. So she's currently finishing up her master's degree in school psychology, and this is a great, great opportunity for her. And it also allows, um, somebody at the ISD who, who needs to retire to retire. So it's a win-win. And, uh, and we do have an excellent person stepping into her shoes. Last meeting, as you recall, we recognized Jesse Cantala for his years of service as guidance counselor, English teacher and basketball coach. And he is already missed, and we will, um, ask the board to officially accept the resignations of both of these teachers today. J.C. Perkins is the teacher who is taking over the caseload of Andrea Rossio. So we're very happy, um, that she's able to do this. She has been serving as half-day third grade teacher and half-day middle high school special ed teacher. She has been serving as half-day third-grade teacher and half-day middle-high school special ed teacher, and she'll just assume full days of special ed now, and she will also be joined by Brian Irazery, our new high school Spanish teacher, and Jade Babcock will be taking on some of the special ed students as well. So, together, the three of them will cover the needs of our students. And then for the third-grade position that J.C. is stepping aside from, we have Dan Stahl, who will be asking the board to approve tonight, and we're very excited that he has applied for this position. He has been a paraprofessional in the CLK schools for several years. He was in the Finlandia teacher prep program, and then, as you might recall, years back, that program ended, and so he, he went on and completed his degree elsewhere and has been doing actually a variety of things in addition to his parapro role, and we're very, very pleased that we will have Dan join us hopefully. And moving on to other things that teachers are doing for us in our district to help out, Jenny Butler is filling in as guidance counselor for the remainder of the year, and we're very grateful for her giving that time and energy, and she's already doing a phenomenal job. Bill O'Connor has taken over one of Jessie's, Jenny's classes to allow her the time to do that. Kevin Butler has agreed to take on the sixth grade English class that needed a teacher, so we're very grateful to Kevin for that as well. And also on the agenda is the recommendation to approve Erin Johnson. She recently came back to the area after being a teacher here a few years back, and I'm very excited that she is willing to be our SAT prep teacher and also fill the role of the COVID compliance officer slash building sub. So, for the majority of her day, she'll be able to step in as needed throughout the school, as we discussed, I think, at the November meeting, and the rest of her day, she'll be doing some teaching and that COVID compliance job that we also discussed. So, very grateful for the teachers in-house who are stepping in to fill whatever needs that we have after we lost two of our valued teachers in the past month. The team spirit during an especially stressful year is very, very much appreciated. And I'll also take this moment to thank all the teachers and staff of Dollar Bay who have worked very hard this fall through many changes, and as you know, much stress to provide our students with equality education, whether they're in person or remote. It's the people who make Dollar Bay School the incredible place that it is, and it's the fantastic students and families who make everything we do worthwhile. So, just a reminder to everybody to take some time this holiday season to appreciate those doing good around you. And that concludes my report.
So true Christina, thank you for that, thank you. We're gonna move on now to action and discussion. Oh, well Tyler, there's nothing more to add for Tyler, right?
I think he had something prepared, Tyler, are you still there?
Yeah, I can just touch briefly on the income statement through November. We are on track where we've currently budgeted, although Christina and I are underway with a budget revision. We, I was hoping to have that done in January, but we may have to look at February to have that completed. So far, everything is going smoothly, our cash flow remains strong, and we haven't had any big items. We'll see what athletics, right now, we are lower than where we typically would be, of course, because the fall sports have been canceled, you know, at least until next, next month. So, a revision, that's why we wanted to wait on the revision slightly, just to see where things will fall, and we can make a better determination of what needs to happen at that time.
Okay, thank you.
The income statement. We're good.
Okay, good, thank you Tyler. So, now we will move on to the action discussion items for personnel. Do we have recommendation to accept the resignation of Jesse Cantala?
I, I would like to make that acceptance with great regret to see Jesse go. He has been a wonderful part of the Dollar Bay School family and will be dearly missed.
Well noted, yes, and I will make, support that. Okay, and we're gonna have to go down the roll. Donna Inman, yes, Steve Leclair?
Yes.
Jeff Stevens?
Uh, yes.
Tara Jankie?
Yes.
Dallas Bond?
Yes, with regrets.
Yep. Dave Mackey?
Yes.
Jennifer Stowe?
Yes.
Okay, sounds like all was in favor, none were opposed, and nobody abstained, motion carries. We will miss you Jesse, yes. Okay, then we are going to move on to our next one. We have a recommendation to accept the resignation of Andrea Rossio. I will, I will make that, and I will also say that she, she will be missed too, and we really appreciate the time that we had here.
And I'll second that, and second the same comment, she is.
Yeah. Okay, so, Donna Inman, do, yes, Steve Leclair?
Yes.
Jeff Stevens?
Yes.
Tara Jankie?
Yes.
Dallas Bond?
Yes, with, with regret.
David Mackey?
Yes.
Jennifer Stowe?
Yes.
All right, looks like everyone's in favor, no one opposed, no abstained, motion carries. So, now we will move on to get a recommendation to approve the hire of Dan Stahl as third-grade teacher. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support that.
Okay, and do we have any discussion on Dan? All right, Donna Inman, yes, Steve Leclair?
Yes.
Jeff Stevens?
Yes.
Tara Jankie?
Yes.
Dallas Bond?
Yes.
David Mackey?
Yes, with just a quick comment that I was impressed by the number of recommendations he received from colleagues and coworkers.
Oh, nice to hear. Nice to hear, and then Jennifer Stowe? Yes. Okay, then, everyone was in favor, no one opposed, no abstained, motion carries. We have a recommendation to approve the hire of Erin Johnson as a part-time teacher and part-time building sub COVID compliance officer. Do we have a motion? I'll make the motion.
I'll support.
Any discussion on Erin? Okay. All right, Donna Inman, yes, Steve Leclair?
Yes.
Jeff Stevens?
Yes.
Tara Jankie?
Yes.
Dallas Bond?
Yes.
David Mackey?
Yes.
Jennifer Stowe?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, none opposed, none abstained, motion carries. So, now we will move on to athletics and personnel. We have a recommendation to approve the hire of Jake Stevens as boys varsity basketball coach. Is there a motion for Jake?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll support.
Awesome, okay, do we have a discussion on Jake? So, Donna Inman, yes, Steve Leclair?
Yes.
Jeff Stevens, you're gonna abstain?
Abstain.
Yeah. Tara Jankie?
Yes.
Dallas Bond?
Yes.
David Mackey?
Yes.
Jennifer Stowe?
Yes.
Okay, so, we have six in favor, one opposed, none abstained, motion, I'm, I'm sorry, none opposed, one abstained, motion carries. And then we are going to move on to the next one. I thought we did this one last time, but recommendation to approve the hire Brendan Leclair as boys JV basketball coach.
You're thinking of when we hired Brendan as the elementary basketball coach?
He's gonna be, yeah.
I was moving up.
Okay, I'll make the motion, and do we have support?
I'll support it.
Or Dave, let Dave.
Okay, sounds good. Any discussion on Brendan? Okay, so Donna Inman, yes, Steve Leclair?
I abstain since he's.
Oh, yeah, yep. Jeff Stevens?
Yes.
Tara Jankie?
Yes.
Dallas Bond?
Yes.
David Mackey?
Yes.
Jennifer Stowe?
Yes.
Okay, so, we have six in favor, none opposed, one abstained, motion carries. All right, I think that's it for that, and now we're gonna move on to finance. We have a recommendation to ratify the sale of the doodle house at two-three-two-four-eight-Hellman Ave, Dollar Bay, on November nineteenth for thirty-two thousand with signature on behalf of the Board of Christina Norland Superintendent. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support, okay. Do we have any discussion on the house?
Pardon me a second, who got the second, was that you Tara?
Um, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know anything what this person has planned for the house? Is he moving to town? Is he going to become a landlord? Do we know anything like that?
Yes, we do, I got to meet the buyers actually, and it was a young man, a new student at Michigan Tech, and his father, I can't remember where he was from, not our country, might have been, might have been Puerto Rico, I'm not sure, and the idea was that the student would live in the house, hopefully get a roommate to live with him. I mean, he did have transportation to and from tech, and then there would be a place for his parents to stay when they came to visit him a few times a year. Nice people.
Good news.
Great.
Very good news. Okay, so, that's all for discussion on it? Okay, so Donna Inman, yes, Steve Leclair?
Yes.
Jeff Stevens?
Yes.
Tara Jankie?
Yes.
Dallas Bond?
Yes.
David Mackey?
Yes.
Jennifer Stowe?
Yes.
Okay, all was in favor, none opposed, no abstained, motion carries. So, we're gonna move on to.
I have a question.
Sure.
Did I hear Debbie comment when she finished her audit discussion that we are supposed to approve the audit? Is that something we should have agenda?
Yes. And.
We can. Under new businesses as well.
We could do that now too, yeah. I did have a note about that Jeff, thank you, the bottom of my paper here. So, we could do that now, I believe, so there's no, that would be our new business. So, do we have a motion to adopt the audit?
I'll make the motion.
I'll support, do we have discussion on the audit? Okay, Donna Inman, yes, Steve Leclair?
Yes.
Jeff Stevens?
Yes.
Tara Jankie?
Yes.
Dallas Bond?
Yes.
David Mackey?
Yes.
Jennifer Stowe?
Yes.
Okay, so, we are all in favor, none opposed, no abstained, motion carries. Okay, and then we do have the other item to discuss too. Did you, how did you want, Jen, did you want to say something on this one?
I just thought we could look at the, what's left in the COVID relief fund to maybe give to the employees at the school.
That's Coronavirus Relief Fund, AKA CRF monies. This is money that was given to all school districts for the purpose of dealing with all the kinds of things that are thrown at us here with COVID. So, we did get a chunk of money and spent down most of that money. A lot of it went toward a new Chromebooks that we desperately needed, and our students needed to be logging in remotely, that type of thing, technology needs, various other things too, but there is a chunk of money left that, that would allow, if the board chose, and it sounds like Jen's bringing it up to discuss, to, to allocate that to teachers and staff, basically all employees, and acknowledgement of all the extra work and time that people have been putting in this fall due to COVID-nineteen. There is significant additional work when students are remote. There is significant additional work when some students are remote, you know, distance learning or virtual, whatever one is at the time, and then others are in the classroom. It's, it's a lot of time that teachers, for example, would normally be spending in their prep period, doing, doing prep for their classwork that they really need to be spending managing these additional students. Staff, all, all staff, all employees have really been doing a lot of work this fall, and so that's one way that some districts are acknowledging that is, is saying that we would, we would like to show that we understand the extra work that has, has been put forth, we appreciate it, and we're able to use these funds in acknowledgement of that extra time, effort, and work that has been provided. So, it'll be up to the board to decide if you wanted to make that motion. There's enough in my last conversation with Tyler at this point for every, every employee to get a basically a thousand dollar amount in acknowledgement of that extra time and, and work.
I would definitely make that motion.
I would definitely support that motion.
All right, any more discussion on it? Okay.
Any questions, anybody?
Yeah, just if, if we don't do that, what, what else would the money be used for? I mean, what else would?
As of right now, we have enough Chromebooks, at least on order, they're about to be here hopefully, for each student in the school, which is really a dream come true, so we don't demand for that. Meanwhile, we've been able to use another fund called GEAR to address the other needs, getting some teachers new projectors, which they really need especially for remote learning because the images aren't crisp on the students' screens when they're at home, if they're not crisp in the classroom. Devices that track with the teacher as they move about the classroom while they're doing remote instruction. Even a laminator so that we can protect materials, papers, et cetera, and then we're able to disinfect them afterward. We have been sending things to the ISD to get this kind of thing done, but if we had one on our own, then we would certainly save a lot in that expense. So, that type of thing, we're able to address through another fund. If we weren't able to spend this on staff and acknowledgement of that work, we would, we would probably end up just getting some additional devices so that we would, we would have basically additional ones. So, maybe if some of the students were remote and others needed them in the school, we could address that more, but really, last year, you might remember, I, I was working with a group of students from tech, trying to come up with grant monies for Chromebooks because it was such a desperate need. So, this is, this is a huge blessing that we're able to get this money. It meets our needs for coronavirus, absolutely, but it's also gonna help us for the next five years down the road as well.
Great, I think it's a great idea then to pass it on to the staff and teacher.
Yes, with our appreciation for all you do, phenomenal job. So, any more discussion on it?
With the risk of having accounting types egging my house tomorrow, is there any concern of if this comes so late in the year, does it affect people's tax situation? Do, are we able to spread some of it into January to perhaps ease that burden?
That's a good question Dave, and unfortunately, the answer is no. This is, we're really down to the wire on it. They want the money to be allocated basically by December thirtieth, for whatever reason, that's the date they decided, although I just heard from one of the people at the Michigan Association of Superintendents and Administrators that the legislators are, are considering extending that, so they're telling us right now whether we have to spend it down in the next week, basically, or not. But, but basically, we want to plan to, if, if the board approves this, to go with the last pay of the year because that is in accordance with the grant stipulations. Now, if we find out that we can extend it, then I totally agree Dave, and I think that's a great idea. So, I don't, I don't know if the motion needs to be made specific, specific to that, but that's a good point you made.
I just wanted to make sure that our appreciation doesn't create a headache. Either way, I think it's the absolute right move.
Yes, um, is there, should we just, I'm wondering how we should approve this then? Should we just go ahead and approve it tonight? And if that's something, or to get back with Christina, address it later? If it can, you know, if you get word that it can be dispersed after the first year, or how do you guys want to do this?
I would say we just make the motion that the rest, the remaining resource be allocated as an appreciation, in appreciation to the faculty and staff. The distribution means to be determined based on further information.
Sure, okay.
I agree.
That's the motion then, and I think you supported Dallas, right? I made the motion, you supported, and if this, any more discussion on it? This is really good news, I'm glad to hear this. Okay, so, we have Donna Inman, yes, Stephen Leclair?
Yes.
Jeff Stevens?
Yes.
Tara Jankie?
Yes.
Dallas Bond?
Yes.
David Mackey?
Yes.
Jennifer Stowe?
Yes.
Okay, we have all in favor, no one opposed, no one abstained, motion carries. Great, good job. Okay, I think there's no more, as far as I know, anyone else have anything? Okay.
Just one, again, don't hate me for talking too much.
It's okay Dave, no, by all means.
Is it appropriate for us as a school board to go on record encouraging the MHSAA to reevaluate their plan and try to? And try to get a more full winter sports season? Or is that overstepping our bounds?
I don't think it's overstepping at all. I think it should be done.
I don't know what exactly it entails, but I think we should make it known that. The winter sports athletes shouldn't take the blow two years in a row.
Yeah. And just as a side, Dave, I believe in the research that I've done so far. The MHSAA is fully in favor of pressing forward. It's, they're trying to abide by the government's, state government's rules.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, maybe they would reconsider and play until April 12th or something like that. It's just an idea. Someone else can make a motion if you think I'm on to something.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so how are we gonna put this? Dave?
Dave, are you gonna, are you gonna word that? I don't want to word my motion, dude.
We encourage the MHSAA to consider an extension of the winter sports season. To allow, I can't think that quickly, but.
It's basically a letter of, a letter, a letter to the MHSAA requesting that they consider for. Request consideration of the extension of the winter sports to later in the season.
That sounds fine by me.
Extension of winter sports, I like it. All right, so any more discussion on that then, everybody? So so then we had a motion by Dave because you were making this official.
Well, I can be either the motion or the support because Jeff spoke up as well.
Okay, you motion Jeff support. Does that sound good, guys? Okay. Okay, so no more discussion on it then? Okay, so Donna Inman, yes. Steve Leclerc?
Yes.
Jeff Stevens?
Yes.
Tara Jenke?
Yes.
Dallas Bond?
Yes.
David Mackey?
Yes.
Jennifer Stout?
Yes.
Okay, all was in favor, none was opposed, none was sustained, motion carries. All right, is there any more? Any more new business anybody would like to bring up? All righty then, we'll move to adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Now support, okay. Okay, so and we don't have any discussion on adjourning. So we're gonna still go through this and roll call, though. Donna Inman, yes. Steve Leclerc?
Yes.
Jeff Stevens?
Yes.
Tara Jenke?
Yes.
Dallas Bond?
Yes.
David Mackey?
Yes.
Jennifer Stout? Everyone was in favor, no one was opposed, we're all abstained, motion carries. Merry Christmas, everyone, and happy healthy 2021.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I had a comment.
Hi Cindy, I heard you.
Oh, okay. Where did everybody go? I'm sorry, I just was able to like unmute myself. Did, did, did you actually? Okay, can I make a comment?
You can. It, it, I don't know that it will be part of the meeting, but I'd be happy to hear from you and pass it on, Cindy.
Okay, can you, can you record me? So I'm recorded?
I believe it's still recording. Oops, hang on. Thank you.
Okay. Unmute. So I'm unmuted now? I can make a comment?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Cindy Byth and this is December 21st. And I'm making a comment to what I thought was going to be a school board meeting. I'm sorry, I didn't realize everybody left so quickly and I was trying to get myself unmuted. Anyhow, thank you to the the school board for using the Zoom. And so that I could attend the December meeting. It was really nice to attend the meeting. Kristen and I sent an email that had three attachments to the board, December 20th, 2020. And I'd be interested, and Kristen would be interested in getting feedback from the board. The first attachment had to do with Karen Hamm budget savings. That weren't really savings, and if there's any questions, please read the email. And the second attachment had to do with you procure suggestions. That it would be nice to have public comments at the beginning and at the end of the meeting. The, and it would be nice that those public comments had a brief summary of what was said. The, and it would be nice to have the the board meetings recorded and available. And the third attachment had to do with Mrs. Norland's evaluation. So I'd like to say again, thank you for for the Zoom format. And it's a really good format and I'd like to see it continued. Thank you.
Thank you.